I have five o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call the media order, have the pledge, and then roll call.
I want to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the true republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody. Subject is discussion of new pool and or splash pad at the park. I'm gonna read the second reading. A roll call, sorry.
Park?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Heywood?
Here.
Booker?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
And everybody is absent.
Okay, second reading, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six by caption only to enter a contract with Vernon's Navy Incorporated to construct a new pool and pool house and or splash pad in pump house and declare an emergency. And discussion. Well, I guess I'll start. And or seems very vague as far as a resolution. But based on our brief discussion at the last council meeting, the splash pad seemed to be within the parameters for us to award that contract, correct?
Yes. Separately.
Separately.
Correct.
So, I think everybody, I'm not gonna speak with everybody. I would like to see that proceed. The pool, on the other hand, I don't know. I guess we're still, I haven't seen the bid, I haven't seen, I don't know, it's a lot of dollars, obviously. We still don't know what our rate's gonna be, we don't know. Hundred percent, I haven't seen where the funds are coming from to know how it's being paid for. So to enter into the contract to construct the pool, I can't in good conscience vote yes on that.
I'm in the same situation. My, my big question if, because I don't know what the rest of the council, or I don't know the majority of you guys are thinking, but my only question if that was the case, and this is part of the reason why we bid them separately was so the Hicksville Community Fund could still move forward with splash pad if the pool got voted down, was the, the price, I guess right now their engineer's estimate's at eight sixty-nine. I know you guys were looking to raise eight hundred, was your, the goal they raised eight hundred, so I didn't know what happens with the difference. I know there's gonna be some changes when it comes to electrical, because currently all the electrical is supposed to go to the pool house. And, and all wiring to the pump house or the splash pad is all gonna come from there, so there's gonna be some engineers, some architectural engineering changes done.
It should've all been included to bid, to bid, to construct separately.
That I'm not sure. Was that bid separately for the electrical or? I don't believe so.
Well, how can I guess they provide a price to build it separately if it's not?
That would a separate meter, I don't know what kind of cost, there should be tons of that, but you, let's just say there's no change at all and the price, let's say the price stays the same. Right now, that's with contingency, but eight sixty-nine, I mean, what happens if it comes in at eight sixty-nine or more? And they have eight hundred thousand committed, what happens, the difference, I guess would be the question I had. I mean, are they willing to generate the rest of it, or are they always looking to offset the difference? I really don't know.
So I guess my big question is, if we're not gonna build the pool, then what are we going to do with money that's earmarked, well earmarked to build the pool? Because my understanding is we have some money earmarked for the pool, correct?
About one and a half million.
Is that, but that does not include their eight hundred?
No. So it's two point three million.
Okay.
That's, the loan would be for two point one four five million.
Right.
And right now, the rates are between seven and eight percent. That's what Cheryl's found with the three local banks for ten years worth of payments and, which puts us over three hundred thousand, right around three hundred thousand dollars a year in pool payments. Which, that means over the course of ten years, you're paying over nine hundred thousand dollars in interest.
Right, even with the lowest bid, or the lowest interest rate of, what, seven?
Seven.
And if the interest rates drop, we can refinance.
Say that again.
If the interest rates go down, we can refinance once.
But none of those are hard bids, correct?
Correct.
You don't, that's purely conversationally correct.
Correct. It could be less.
I know, my only other concern is, right now, we were, we were waiting for this to see what happened with the fire EMS levy. And that's a five-year levy, what happens in five years if the renewal doesn't pass, then we're gonna be, no funds for general funds, gonna be low again. I guess that'd be my other concern down the road.
Just looking at the future. This discussion before, just tonight.
This, to me, this should've been done a year ago.
What's that?
In a way.
I understand, I'm with, I'm with everybody. This, not having this information in front of us makes us look foolish, frankly. We've asked and it's not been presented to us. So, we can sit here and say that it should've been done. But frankly, it wasn't, so. And we all approved the two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in architect fees for said pool that now we're not even gonna build?
We have the prints of the plans and everything, just.
I'm not saying I'm against the building the pool, I want to say that first and foremost. What I, I can't in good conscience vote yes on it, not knowing, one, actually having hard quotes on financing. So we haven't submitted an RFP to any of the bank, I've actually talked to a couple bankers myself. And we, nobody's provided a hard bid, so we don't know exactly what rates are on the table right now, we don't know how those rates are based. It is more than what we initially thought it was gonna be. Right. And we still have in this, as I guess council said, okay, yeah, let's do, let's do this. So without having all of that information, we can't, my, my opinion is we can't go forward with the contract saying, yep, we're, we're gonna build it. We don't know where the money's coming from, but here's the contract. We know where the money's coming from. I don't. So, like, we always ask Cheryl, can we afford it, can we pay for it? Like, anything that we can do, because she's our fiscal officer, the fiduciary responsible person for the village. So, the question is, can we afford the monthly payment or not, Cheryl? Yes.
Just not sold on that. I mean, I, I trust her, but a week ago, if the pool, if the fire EMS levy didn't pass, we didn't have money for a pool.
Right.
And the fire EMS levy's gonna generate two hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred dollars a year. And the pool payment's gonna be three hundred and eight thousand dollars a year.
Maybe.
That's what they were, I was up a week ago.
We don't know the hard rate though.
Right.
One percent on two point one million, it's a pretty substantial difference.
But it's, we're generating money for the fire EMS levy that we didn't have, that couldn't come out of general fund, but now we have it to pay for pool, and I've said that for months ago. Wants and needs are a little different, I mean, I mean, by the way, passed the fire EMS levy, but.
Okay, any others discussion?
It's just, what happens in five years if it doesn't renew? Can we still afford it then?
The money that I'm talking about is the money that we always put in our budget in capital projects. It's always between five and seven hundred thousand every year. If we have earmarked three hundred of that, we still have the rest to use on other projects. It's not a belt tightening anything. And the one point five, if we don't do the pool, the one point five million just sits there, because it's all, it's in capital projects in the new budget.
Another thing to think about is, I know the interest rate's high, but what are we getting on our CDs? They're getting a lot of interest right now, because that's where the interest rates are, correct?
We don't have a lot of CDs, it's invested in different kinds of treasury notes.
More secure, sort of playing the market. I'm all for, I love the pool design, I love the splash pad design, I appreciate all the work they've done out in the community, I'm, I'm for both. I'm not gonna talk about the past or anything. My concern is, yes, financing something at this volume, at this dollar amount, you know, four point four mil, needs a lot of discussion for me, because we're not talking about just today, but we're talking about a pool operation, splash pad operation for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. That pool set down there for how long? You know, and was utilized by the community, I mean, would love to use, but as time goes by, expenses go up and you'll start having operational increases, things breaking down, things of that nature. So, the bigger the facility, the more issues you could have with it. We talked about the pool budget, the park budget has tripled probably. Both those two budgets have increased dramatically, and that's not been really talked about, just with that type of operation with employees, energy costs, things of that nature, staffing. We're trying to make good positive changes for the park, with getting some park directors and scheduling maybe swim lessons or all kinds of things going on at the park, and I think we could utilize that. You know, I kept it around in my head, I'd love to have both. Do we need a three-point, some million dollar pool? You know, I look around these other communities, I went by Arch Poles today. You know, they've used it for years, and they do have a splash pad at Souter Village, and I've told you, I've talked to my sister-in-law who runs the YMCA operation in, in Auburn, and, you know, they've had some struggles with people using the pool, you know, they charge like a buck a day on Fridays to get in, and a couple dollars to get in to use the splash pad, you know, to help with operational expenses and things of that nature. They haven't had, from what they've told me, I mean, they thought they'd have a lot more people utilize this stuff, so. And I know we really want to use, have these kids come in for free and enjoy the facility, I mean, the splash pad part, but not the pool, the splash pad, so. I'm for it, I, I trust Cheryl's judgment, I know she's really, I know, I've had sit-downs with her. But I'm glad we're having this meeting and talking about the issues, you know, that are forthcoming, you know, trying to make solutions.
Yeah, I guess that's, you brought up another point, is the operations. So we talked about the construction cost. Can we afford to operate this pool? Do we know what it's gonna cost to operate the pool? And, and the splash pad matter, I mean, frankly, but like, where's that money coming from to operate that?
Park and pools always come out of general fund, and that's where the money has to come from.
And it's gonna, you're gonna be pulling, I ballpark it, I can't remember.
Uh, I think so, pool was a hundred and seventy-one thousand and the park was two eighty-one or two ninety-one.
Potential increases from the past. Have we talked about where that money can come from, from, that's all general fund generated?
Both of them combined, actually, park, pool, and pavilion combined over the last four years, and it's been right around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year for all three combined, and this year was five hundred and ninety thousand dollars was what initial we have, and we're waiting to be financed until after we decide what we're doing with this.
It's another increase, I mean, it's a potential increase per year, and you know, you take a look at the operation that's open, I'm sure the splash pad would stay open longer than utilize more, rather than the pool with the upkeep, you know, three, four months.
Well, I guess, you know, back to what you were saying, Eric, you have two hundred eighty-six, you know, a week ago, we couldn't afford both. You have two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in additional funds being generated by EMS levy. If you're talking about almost, just for easy numbers, just say two hundred thousand dollars to operate the pool, plus, you're taking all of that out of capital projects. We, it's not that we don't have capital projects coming up, we still have Defiance Avenue, Lip Station, we still have water line replacements, we still have, if the long-term control plan is mostly, I mean, it's mostly there, but, I mean, we still have a lot of projects coming up, so how are those being funded? If we're eating up all of that capital project money? I wouldn't say you're eating it up. I mean, you, I'm, I'm not saying that negatively, I mean, I'm saying if we earmark five to seven hundred thousand dollars of capital projects, capital project dollars out of general fund every year, you're consuming a large portion of that for pool operations and pool debt payment. Financially, we're doing well, okay? Income taxes up, what, thirteen percent from last year, well, that's, that's a positive, I'm trying to be positive, so. Well, and I, I understand trying to be positive, I think, you know, discussing the pool is, I mean, it's a wonderful thing, it's a wonderful investment. But when it comes down to it, I mean, it's taxed, it's taxed out. There's always gonna be, well, what, what, if this happens or this happens, I mean, I don't have a vote, but I have a say. I think, you know, we promised the community, we tore the old one out, and it's nothing there, are we gonna leave it a hole in the next two or three years? Well, just because that was done, it doesn't mean we need to put ourselves in a fiscally tight position, I guess, and it's not been discussed. We haven't discussed any of it. But, yeah. So, the, are you ready to do a vote, suspend the rules, do a vote on the third reading, or what's your?
Well, I, you know, we're still working on finance budget, and, and I got a question both from Cory and Cheryl that work on, you know, street, going down the road here, but park and, and pool operations. I mean, have you looked at the increase in how you're gonna generate additional dollars for that, that part of the general fund? With what they're proposing? I mean, we've had two meetings and have seen increases, but we, we've not talked about where those increases could come from, so. Have you guys discussed that, is that something that's even feasible? That's a Cheryl question.
Increases, what are you talking about, increases?
Increase for operation, pool budgets, you know, when we talked about adding the pool and everything, I mean, we talked about, it's over five hundred combined. What used to be about one, or one seventy total for the park and pool combined. Or is the additional money gonna do operations for those, those two project, I mean, those two? Have you looked into where they pulled it?
Budget for the pool is, you know, kind of padded fairly heavy, because, you know, we are buying all the new furniture. So, you're talking about forty thousand dollars right off the rip there for the pool. You know, hopefully, that's just gonna be a one-time thing, rather than the contractor buying all that and.
Marking it up.
Marking up this percentage. You know, there's equipment and stuff that we would need to purchase for the concession part of, of the pool, so. I would ultimately have to think that the first year of the pool is going to look the heaviest on our budget. Because, you know, we, we are not gonna be buying a bunch of new furniture every single year, and buying equipment for the kitchen area, office equipment for the, for the office and stuff there every single year, it's gonna be hopefully a one and done.
Well, I guess, what is the annual, I mean, what is the estimated annual operations?
This year, I had thirty thousand.
I'm saying with, with the new pool, what are they, what are they estimating it's gonna cost annually with salary, with, with chemical treatment, with electrical costs, with?
Yeah, the, for the utilities, which, you know, the electrical, the chemicals, I had thirty thousand sitting in there for this year. I don't remember exactly what the wage line was, because we did a wage increase.
You're saying for, when you say this year, what are you referring to?
Twenty twenty-four, for next year.
This coming year.
Okay.
You had forty-two, three thirty-six for wages. Because that's based on the number of lifeguards required for that.
Eleven or twelve bucks an hour, something like that.
Based on their way to, to encourage lifeguards, that was around probably around forty, forty-two.
Okay, so wages are forty-two, thirty, so you're a hundred thousand or less probably in annual operations? And what was our previous annual budget?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, wasn't it, thirty-five thousand, our whole pool budget used to be?
I have, I have, it was a, it was a cross-out from last year's budget, but I think it was around thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five.
This would require a lot more lifeguards, say, and add a higher rate and try to keep them, and more electrical. And this, you know, just basing off of what some of the other pools was, I mean, it's just, yeah, so what the actual, could also be one more. So that just comes out of the general fund? And then the dollars to make the debt payment would be coming out of the five to seven hundred thousand dollars that we earmarked for capital projects. So, that's not any more per se coming out of the annual budget? We have an additional seventy thousand a year in operations, so just based for the pool, that's what that is. So do we feel like if we build this pool as it's designed, it's gonna bring more people into town? They're gonna be buying gas in town, they're gonna be eating out of restaurants, I mean, I know the pool's only open for three months currently, because we hire high school lifeguards. But, you know, with this housing development, Eric could talk about all this extra revenue that would be made just by, you know, something like that, do you think the pool would bring any additional tax dollars?
I know it would, I mean, go over to the other pools, like at our campground, I mean, they bring people in from all over the place. Park last time, it was pretty filled, you start talking, people asking if they're camping for the weekend or what they're doing, and now it's cheaper to bring them here for a day, here and there, than what it is to put our own pool in there, you know, and your own pool. So definitely generate bringing people into town.
Because I know right now, a lot of people are leaving town to go to pools and splash pads, so obviously, we're gonna be able to splash pad regardless, correct?
I gotta say one thing about this pool, it's, it's unique and it's got more attractions kind of thing, the size and the layout of it. It's beautiful, I mean, splash pad's beautiful, I think it could be utilized, I guess, to bring people, if you're gonna bring people, you need to make something different than the other towns.
Okay, any other discussion? I don't, I'm not comfortable entering into a contract with Noggle until we know exactly what our rates are in front of us.
My only other, I'm not, my only other comment, I guess, would be, which I'm not disagreeing at all, is we know that there's grant money available possibly after the first year. But I know the bids, that bid's not good that long either.
Right.
Looking to possibly get a half million dollar grant.
Right, that would be extremely helpful. But can, I mean, we've got three resolutions in front of us, can we, I understand a motion to, for A, which is construction of splash pad and pump house.
My one question on that one was the difference in price.
I mean, right now, it doesn't sound like we're gonna have the votes to construct the pool, so.
You know, we gotta suspend the rules first, to that third vote. With the splash pad, you know, if, when it comes to the splash pad and the parking lot, and all, you know, we all know that parking lot is in pretty bad shape, right? So this splash pad cost is not parking lot as well, so you're at least another sixty-five thousand on top of this four in the parking lot if we, well, we gotta do something with the parking lot, at least a portion of it. So that was all, that parking lot price was all part of the pool and the pool house construction, not part of the, of the splash pad. Just, that is a chunk of change as well, and it's not the pool price.
Parking lot's gonna be done after the construction, when all the, you know, cement, trucks and everything are coming in, we don't wanna do that until afterwards.
But that's, is that including what the school had, their portion of helping pay the parking lot?
The school has vowed to pay up to thirty percent for the parking lot.
Do they know how much that's gonna cost?
Engineer's estimate was two hundred and ten thousand approximately, and that was completely taking it all out and starting over for the most part, and so that was worst-case scenario. Where the school had agreed to pay up to thirty percent of that price now.
Of that price, okay.
If the price comes in and it's only seventy-five thousand, then the school would be on the hook for twenty-five thousand, that's still a third.
Yeah, I guess you all didn't know where the school's budgeting process was.
Yep, it's at a maximum of.
But is the, are the dollars allocated in twenty twenty-four?
The, the DDA price to not do the parking lot was sixty-five thousand, so that's where you get your sixty-five from. But I still think at that price, we move forward with the parking lot regardless.
Yes.
If, if I may speak. So, I just, a couple of clarifications, if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
You currently have three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars approximately in architectural fees, but the village has spent, did I understand that correctly?
Ballpark, two eighty-six.
Okay, two eighty, it's went out for bid twice, correct? So, roughly, the village has three hundred K invested in just getting to the point that we're at right now. And what I hear is that now you're not sure what you want to do, I get that, okay? I don't have a problem with that. But I heard Erica stand up here a week ago and essentially say that if you're gonna see the town grow and you're gonna invest, you're gonna have to, and the village is gonna have to invest in some of that too. I think you gotta make the decision about the pool, whether that's part of the investment, the risk that you, you know, you take to a certain level to try to, to grow the community. If you can fiscally, you know, support it and do it. I'd love to see the splash pad get going and, and get moving forward. But I also think that if you don't do the pool, you're gonna have, maybe we can make this splash pad even better between the village and, and the committee. And to me, it's a little bit of a rushed decision right now to say, hey, let's just get the splash pad going, if you don't know what you're gonna do with the, with the whole property down there, how you're gonna develop it. And that hurts me to say that, because I really want to see the splash pad get done and get moving forward. But at the end of the day, I'm more interested in what is best for the community in the long haul. That was, that was all, just some things to think about.
Well, we've discussed that, we've discussed doing a more grand splash pad if the pool didn't get approved and just to have it now a little bit more affordable, I guess. So the problem is now that it's been about the bid and all the engineering, architectural stuff's done, you know, so the volume of the pumps and the number of features and all that, that completely changes possibly.
I understand, Eric, and all gonna go up for re-then, there's more money. To me, you know, I'm looking at from the business side, three hundred K is a lot of money to sit here now and say, whata, whata, whata. And where we're at, but somewhere, somewhere a decision has to be, has to be made, we have to be moving forward with it, it's from my perspective. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, the thing is, motion is second reading and declare an emergency. We go that route, then we can do a vote if you're ready for that.
I still don't have an answer, what, what we're doing with the difference for, that, I mean, that's gonna base my, my vote on it probably, I mean, what's the difference on how we're paying the difference for if number eight, letter A passes?
Well, it's all one ordinance.
Numbering's over eight hundred thousand.
They committed eight hundred thousand to the splash pad, this is eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, where's the difference coming? Are we paying for it, are they raising it? They're coming out, whose pockets are coming out of, I guess?
We committed to raising eight hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if we go over that, it's, it's available for the project, but.
I'd say the city would.
When we sat up here now, almost two years ago, at that point in time, when we were just talking splash pad out in the field beside a rotary, the city at that time committed to bringing the infrastructure to the, to the project. So that'd be the water, the electrical, and so, to me, you should commit to that and make up the difference between what we raise and, you know, and what it would take now that at least initially you're only gonna do is splash pad.
So if that money is earmarked for a pool, does it sit there until we use it for a pool one day?
Well, you'll have to bet on the appropriations for twenty twenty-four, but that's where it is right now.
And it couldn't be used to make up the difference for the splash pad? Oh, it could, because it's still considered.
Capital project, it could re-appropriate, yeah.
Okay. I know in the past, there's been a contingency fund for a pool, and I know years ago, that kind of got eaten up by a bad economy. Is it within the realm of possibility that we start that again and see what that looks like? Or is this something that if we don't do it now, we'll never see in our community? Because I personally, a splash pad doesn't benefit my family, we've outgrown a splash pad. I would travel to go to a pool, and we, we have memberships at other pools, and, you know, my son loved going to the pool down here at Hicksville. So, I see the benefit of a pool, especially at the age range that my family's at. This number is very hard to justify, because I want to use everybody's money wisely. But if I'm gonna sit money in a fund that will one day get eaten up, then it's almost like maybe we should strike now while the iron's hot. It's very hard, I mean, I, you brought up great parts about what Erica said. Part of Erica's project is also gonna cost us money. So in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, all right, if we dump all of this money that maybe should go towards housing additions, if we dump it into a pool instead of housing additions, then we don't have space for people to even move to utilize the pool, I mean, there's a lot of things. It's very hard to make this decision. I know you've committed that, yes, we can afford the monthly payments. Can we also, in addition to the monthly payments, can we afford running the pool? Can it, like, we can afford the operations, the yearly operations?
Well, that's hard for me to answer you. Affirmative, because we don't know. We've never had a pool that was like this before.
Correct, but we have estimated numbers, like, just based on the estimated numbers.
The estimated numbers I'm good with. I'm just hoping that they are true.
Accurate.
Yeah, accurate. But, and the only way we can do that is to look at other pools, and we've done that, that are kind of like. But, and the only way we can do that is to look at other pools, and we've done that, that are kind of like based on ours.
Now, you, I mean, you've set these meetings too. You know what Erica has to say. You know some of the things that we're gonna have to improve and things that we're, decisions we're gonna have to potentially make about that land. Can we do both major projects?
Real quick, I guess to interject there. Erica's presentation didn't necessarily cost us any money.
Right, we'd be doing it through a TIF, but we'd be losing money initially, right?
You're losing money, no. You're, that TIF is refunded based on the property taxes generated on the property.
Right, but normally, we would get that, correct?
No, so you, basically, but you're, you're, you're missing out on money that we're not currently getting.
So you really don't miss out?
So you don't miss out on anything?
Correct.
So if there's no TIF in place, let's just say you have a three hundred thousand dollar property that's paying real estate taxes. Our current real estate taxes that are, are generated off of that property, I mean, we pay real estate taxes, we're, that's costing us money currently, as it sits there.
Right.
A TIF basically reduces the property taxes based on that new three hundred thousand dollar value. So a portion of that that they are paying to the county is then redistributed back to us, or to the developer, whomever.
So part of that TIF, would it go to, like, improving our lift station? Because I know that that's been discussed, and running new copper wire, running all that stuff?
So that depends on, I know this is a pool, so I'm not sure if we're able to necessarily discuss it, but it is generated just like regular tax revenue, regular real estate taxes. So if we hold the TIF, so we actually foot the bill for the infrastructure, then we get more of that back. And then basically, after a certain, after the time period lapses, or it's fulfilled, that dollar value's fulfilled, then it goes back to your regular tax rate. So we would be receiving actually more tax revenue on that fifty-six parcel development than we would if it was developed without a TIF, if we held the TIF. So we're not losing any money, and technically, it's not costing us any money.
Right, because, I mean, that was.
Unless we fronted the bill for the infrastructure.
Right, right, but we would, we would be done through the TIF. And I do understand, I'm learning. This is definitely, you know, so much of this is a learning process, so it's, I don't wanna learn that someone else is expensive. So I really want to understand all of the numbers and know that that project is out there, and that's something that also is going to lead to development and growth of the community. I think a pool will definitely bring people in. It is a family atmosphere. It will bring families into the community. It will bring people who will invest in this community because they're raising a family here. So I definitely see the benefit. But I really just needed to know from Cheryl that, yes, we can afford the monthly payment, and yes, we can afford the operationals. Because I don't feel like I can make a good decision if, if you can't strongly say that yes.
The answer I gave was?
Best yes you could give.
It's an estimate.
I have another question. I know they were quoted separately, but when you bring a crew in, a construction in, to build, I don't care if it's a pool or a splash pad, and you only do one, and they leave the site, it's gonna cost more down the road. I don't care if they come back a month later, a year later. They might have quoted the lower amount now, but they're on site, they're ready to go, they don't want it all to pop, so. To me, it's gonna cost us, if we don't move forward with it now, it's gonna cost us more for that same pool. If you wait a day, or if you wait a year, or five, five years.
It's gonna cost more.
So real quick, I guess, I was just rounding numbers over here. Seven percent interest rate would be roughly two hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred annually. Eight percent would be three hundred and five thousand eight hundred annually. So roughly a thirteen thousand dollar difference annually, based on the year. Does that affect anything?
No, it's gonna try to get the lowest, lowest amount I can get. Hopefully.
Well, that, that does affect. It's like, when it's time to do industrial drive for one point five million, where are you getting that money? If you take, if you take sixty percent of your general fund capital projects to make pool payments, that leaves you about two hundred thousand. You're not gonna get much for two hundred thousand. Because I, I was paving out of there, I guess we don't pay for it in the next ten years. And I said, there's other projects looming on the water sewer and the, you better think about more than.
Fortunately, the water tower, we got a lot of grants.
Yeah.
The same five million dollars, the well field. But surprisingly, this is where this money's coming from.
Well, yeah.
We were blessed with grants, so if that wasn't the case, yeah, it, it would be tight.
Plenty's gonna be tight regardless. Because your other budget line, budgets are up this year. They're gonna keep going up and up.
But there's only one person in this room that looked at these numbers five days a week, forty hours a week, probably in her sleep. And she's saying, yeah, we go to her for everything else, but now we don't trust her judgment. That's what I can't get over. We always look to her for, can we afford this? Is it in the budget? Can we do this? And she's saying yes, and I guess the other one's a yes with a guesstimate. And I don't know. I know how my vote's gonna go, depending on what, what happens, so.
Okay, any more discussion? I'm referring a lot. Thank you. Good.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Charlie, but at the end of the day, we're the ones that sign the documents. We wanna make sure we're in due diligence and knowing the structure, how it's all put together. And I'm not saying we absolutely go a hundred percent bust here, I was talking and stuff, but, you know, we have our name lines on the document, and, you know, it's two, three, five years down the road, and we're like, we're having some struggles, you know? And I, I called Six Mill. I called, told him to give me his phone number. I said, he builds these all day long, all over the place, you know, kind of thing, so. He said, you know, sometimes there are shortfalls. You don't have the employees or something like that. You know, you shut, you shut the diving board area down, and you shut the, the slides down, and you have two or three lifeguards there. You know, the kids can still swim, kind of thing, so. He said, this is, this is a unique pool, the design, and, and it's, it's exceptional for a town our size, but he did, he did say it, you know, it brings people to them. Because of the splash pad combo and the pool design.
So what's on the table is to, if we want to declare emergency and then we can go to the vote. I mean, the first would be to suspend the rules, right? Then we go to a vote if you're ready to get there.
Is it, I guess, real quick, it's just for clarification, is there a reason we haven't gotten our proposals on these yet? Like, why?
The bid has not been awarded, so I can't give out information in the bid. I can only give them ballpark figures. So then I can only give you ballpark figures. Haven't even accepted the bid yet.
Well, if we accept the bid, we're committing to funding it regardless of what our rates are. Correct?
It's the state of Ohio.
Well, I'll make a motion on letter A to suspend the rules to, for yes to vote, to move forward with the splash pad and the village pays the difference of the, whatever the eight hundred thousand dollars, the splash pad, or whatever it's what community fundraises, which pays a difference for that.
Any second?
That's for the splash pad or just a splash pad?
Just a splash pad.
Just on that?
So how, how is this being presented? So are, this is all, this is miscellaneous? Like, we're, I guess, just so I'm clear.
So this was the splash pad for eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand?
You can do only the splash pad, only the pool, or you can do them both together, A, B, or C.
But we go and vote on each of them? We'll vote on A, then we'll vote on B, and then we'll vote on C?
There's a motion for the other ones. Right now, he's just motioning for A.
Everyone write a letter down, and you, and you just, I don't know how to do this.
Oh, tell me. I don't either.
Yeah, and, because the, really, the resolution is.
I gave the resolution last time at the last meeting for the pool project.
Okay.
And they got the first reading, but then they wanted it split, so I did that. So now you have two choices.
Should it be three separate resolutions?
No.
No, it should be just one?
It'll be one in the end, because they're all the same number and everything, it's just.
So if this suspender rules goes down, then what? Somebody has to, to say, I wanna do A, B, C? I guess I'm voting.
So C, C would be doing, C would be doing A and B combined.
Yes.
A would be the only doing splash pad, B would only be doing the pool. I don't think anyone wants to do B. I mean.
Right.
I mean, nobody wants to do that one by itself and say, no, sorry, we don't want to do splash pad.
Right, so it's either A or C.
Exactly.
Do we have to say A or C?
Well, it was been out by the contractors as project A, B, or C, so.
Do we suspend the rules?
Whatever one you do is the resolution that.
Gets brought forward.
It's in front of you. It's not gonna have an A, B, or C on it.
Right, but how do people know what they're voting yes or no on?
If you made a motion, so if nobody seconds mine, and you make a motion a different way, and somebody seconds your motion, then we vote on your motion, not mine. So if you give a motion to do letter C and do it all, and somebody else seconds your motion, then we vote on letter C.
Okay, so I have some discussion. Do we first have to suspend the rules and then we vote?
We already suspended the rules.
So we can do it.
To do just the splash pad. But you have a first and a second.
First and second, so we have a, a roll call? Do you receive your second?
I do receive my second, because I was confused. I make a motion to suspend rules for C.
And you're making a motion to suspend rules for A?
A only.
Okay, we have to have a second. We got two motions on the table, the same resolution. And first Troy, we need him.
You're supposed to be Troy when he's up here. He's that buckeye education.
I do have one here there, but I'm confused what to do.
Well, you get up a second to A and.
Well, if that passes, then I would have the third reading.
We have a second reading for both together, and you have the, suspend the rules. You need a second. Nobody seconds it then.
It does it then?
Yeah. So we have two on the table, yours for A, yours for C. I only had any seconds on either one of them.
I'm second on Eric's.
And I can't vote, right?
And this doesn't say we're not, to me, if I can add two in my second, this doesn't mean we're not getting the pool. I would really like to see additional numbers. I mean, I know we've talked to people, and I'm sorry, Mayor.
I know.
But I really wanna see operational costs. Like I said, my, my sister-in-law's CFO.
We could be looking for costs for ten years.
I don't, no, I don't think, no, I, we need to make a move on the pool this year, right? Soon.
How long?
This is the meeting.
Sixty days, sixteen.
November.
November first, they were open, been opening. So I'm saying November first.
We've got basically, last weekend, November.
I'm not saying I'm not for the pool. I just. So I'm seconding Eric's.
So.
Roll call.
So then, how, how does that work, though? If you're, are we gonna bring this back up before the end of the year yet?
I think we, I.
But we're gonna, we're not gonna have any more numbers then than we are now, right?
At least today, we'll get the splash pad.
You guys will just do your voting and award the bid that I can give out the info.
But you're only gonna have the info on the splash pad if that's, I've got a second on Eric's, and I'm gonna have a second on.
So if we, if we award the bid just for the splash pad, and then we go back in discussion to potentially award, but we'll have to go back and get another, like, we'll have to go all the way back, right?
No, that's good for sixty days.
They did provide a quote for both.
Right, so you just want, you just want more information within that sixty days?
Right.
But, but you've said we're not gonna get any more numbers in sixty days than what we have right now?
Unless Troy, if you go ahead and do this for the splash pad, if I can give out the info, if we can award the contract.
Okay, I have a question. I'm sorry. When, you can't call a bank and work with a bank and say, we're gonna deposit.
I have done it, and I've given them soft numbers. I can't give them an exact number because it has not been awarded. I can't say this is our contractor, because that will matter in the negotiations. And I can't do that unless it's awarded, and so far, we haven't done that.
I think it's the operational cost that's scared me the most, and the fact that you don't, you know, you can't, you can't give us information on that. I mean, that's, I mean, we pretty much know what the loan is gonna look like. It's the operational cost that's up in the air.
And that's weird, because I'm not really concerned on the operational cost.
Yeah.
No, it's the, the pool payment, the yearly pool payment.
Well, obviously, the.
The interest rate, you're paying almost a million dollars in, in ten years of interest.
Right, no, I understand, because it's the, yes.
That's, that's pennies on the dollars compared to what the operating costs are. I mean, you're looking at fifty thousand dollars maybe to operate the pool compared to what it used to be?
Yes, I see what you're saying.
Fifty thousand dollars a year times ten years, I mean.
Roll call. Discuss the pretty well.
Or suspend the rules for the splash pad and online. Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly? Oh, sorry. Martin?
Yes.
Clifford?
Or suspend the rules for A, or just to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules for A.
Yes.
Eglin?
Yes.
Okay. Third reading, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six by Capitola to enter contract with Vernon, Vernon Niggle Incorporated to construct a new, I guess, splash pad and pump house and declare an emergency, which would be, be A.
Fine.
Roll call, I guess.
I'll vote.
I'll second.
Okay. Martin?
Yes.
Clifford?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Eglin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank God, okay.
Now, where, now what's the next step?
Well, we need to decide if we're building a pool.
Yes, we do, need to decide that.
Do you wanna go out and try to have Six Mill come in, give us, talk to some other communities that have a pool of that size and actually get numbers in front of us?
Has that not been done?
I haven't seen that. I've heard ballparks, I've heard it costs much, that much. Do you think it's too late for that?
Yeah, we should have done that a year ago. We got the bid, bid twice, right? For bid?
Have we not? I mean, have you discussed that with Six Mill? You got the floor.
Yeah, that's why, I just, I sat here and told everybody, I've got thirty thousand dollars in operational costs just to run the pool. You know, that doesn't include, include wages, that's our electrical, and that's our chemicals and everything. And I said it was, in my opinion, it was a little passive.
I'm not worried about the operational part. It was the interest in the monthly or the yearly fee for ten years.
So what's gonna give you clarity?
Not, not spending over nine hundred thousand dollars in interest in ten years.
So you've made your mind up?
No, I mean, I have, I have emails here that show, you know, if the fire EMS lobby didn't pass, we were gonna scale down or eliminate this time EMTs.
Yep.
That's a need. A pool's a lot. I'd love to have a pool. But if, if last Tuesday, if the fire EMS lobby would not have passed, I don't think anyone would be thinking about a pool right now.
But it, but it did pass.
It did, for five years. We'll generate that money for five years. Year six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, what if it doesn't get renewed?
Well, we'll have to bridge when we get there.
Well, that's one way to look at it, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can't worry about what's gonna happen five years.
Gotta have faith in the community.
You can't.
I'm the one vote.
And I have no vote. Okay.
I've been asking for these payments since April twenty-ninth, for what, what they would be. April twenty-ninth, five fifteen.
We were getting some numbers back then, though.
Six twelve. Nine twenty-two.
If you remember, the interest rates were in the fours back then.
Five and a half and six.
Yeah, well, maybe before that, it was four.
Over a year ago, when we were talking, it was four, four and a half. But we were also talking about a total pool project of two, two and a half million, totally for everything, and now it's four and a half. It's almost doubled than what we anticipated.
I totally get it. It's a lot bigger now.
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Yes?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Eglin?
We can.
Clifford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Okay, I'm needing to adjourn.